Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of the County of Lennox and Addington of Wednesday, March 19th, 2025 to order at 6:32 PM. Can I get an adoption of the minutes of our regular monthly meeting held February 26th, 2025? Deputy Warden Hegedorn, Councillor Fritsch, any edits, errors, or omissions to those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Approval of the agenda that's before us, can I get a mover? Councillor Davison, seconded by Councillor Richardson. All those in favor? Motion is carried. We come to the Warden's Report. Oh, yes, any disclosures of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none. The Warden's Report. Motion to receive by Councillor Hogg, seconded by Councillor Calver. Any comments? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Matters for consideration, EMS Operational Review. And I'm going to turn to our chief.
Just want to take an opportunity to share the last year that our team and Metavi's team and Rob and I have put together and a little report for you to read and view at your leisure. However, we also wanted to provide some anecdotal stories, some real-life experience of, you know, what the words on the paper mean, and we felt this was a great opportunity to share this with you and answer any questions if there be any. I'm going to introduce Chief Mike Adair, who was here at the outset of, before I arrived, and supported Rob and the team. And we also have in our presence Darcy Clinton, who is also a member of Metavi. So he's going to share the initial thoughts and how we got there. I'm going to step in, bring us up to speed today, and Mr. Burns is going to close this out.
It's kind of like Charles Dickens, the past, present, and future. Through you, Warden, I am really pleased to be here and standing here today, very proud of this team and of this county. I'm very grateful for the opportunity, not only to have been the interim chief just over a year and a half ago, but also to see the progression, the advancement that has occurred with the team that saw us standing behind me and that's in these chambers here today. You know, when I first was in this room, there was an audience of paramedics that were concerned. And I know they're not here today, but I know that they're being well taken care of, and in turn, our community is being well taken care of. I meant it then, and I meant it now, they are the heart of the service, and as we move forward, they will continue to be the heart of our service. One of the things that, you know, we asked when I first arrived here was, what are we going to do, when talking about moving forward, what are we going to do with our team, what are we going to do for the community, and how will we move forward? And we really broke it down into three areas, and Craig's going to talk a little bit about that today. But we looked at efficient and best practices to make sure that we're doing things well. We looked at focusing on our paramedics and on our operations, and we also focused on the patient, of course, in terms of how we want to advocate. And there are many examples, again, that Craig will talk a little bit about today and Rob Burns as well. But some of the highlights, at least when I was here, was, you know, evolving our leadership in paramedic services to make sure that we learn, that we reflect, and that we're accountable for our actions and our behaviors, and making sure that we are role models for our paramedics. And I believe that's one of the things that we've really well achieved. And, you know, examples and things like the Labor Relations Committee, which preexisted, of course, before my time, and the Education Committee are examples of times where we've led by example and made sure that we are doing things and setting example for our paramedics. Mental health and peer supports, another area. Employee engagement through those committees and through listening and some of the changes that you've seen with Craig as the chief. And implementing best practices in areas like mobile integrated health and doing some of those things. So I recall, you know, spending a couple of days going through the, like, our mobile integrated health budget to make sure that everything's allocated as appropriate and making sure that the municipality is getting the best value for the money that you're spending. And those are sort of the types of things that we were doing. So that was, you know, my sort of initial work that we did here, and since then, so much has been done, and I really am proud of this team. And I'm going to pass the microphone over, and maybe you'll remember that I ramble a little bit in council. So, over to you. Over to you, Craig.
We love your ramble, and I do the same. Basically, from the report, the introduction, I'm just going to speak to a few points within each page and just give you guys a high-level, real-life experience of what that means. So, one of the big things that we've introduced this year was MPDS and MCAD. So, we did not have to introduce mobile computer-aid dispatch, but we really believed, true in our hearts, that that integration with MPDS would allow our paramedics to respond more quickly, more appropriately, and serve our community as the best it could. So that was crucially important. We invested that technology. Kudos to our IT department in respects to that, for supporting us in that initiative, making that actually so easy, that we were blown away at how easy we were able to work with them and achieve that. So, kudos to everybody in this team in the county that came to be and came to support us in achieving our goals that support our community. We saw with our staff that they, there was an appetite to be engaged in leadership and succession planning. So we expanded the role of PTL, we expanded our paramedic team leaders. So these are our union members that actually step into a quasi-supervisory role and allow them to learn whether this is an avenue that they would like to explore in the future. We invest in them, we invest in education, we investigate in time and training. So that's been a great opportunity for our staff. Our last allotment was approximately 12 individuals that signed up for that and thought they might be interested. So we saw that as an opportunity to show our employees we cared about them, we wanted to invest in them and help them grow and become leaders in the future. On page seven of the document, I'm going to speak to the few points here. So number one was enhancing our primary care and community base, our mobile integrated health, our community paramedics. So we've worked really hard at this with, to be in alignment with the quintuple, quintuple, hate that word, quintuple aim of Ontario Health. We've ensured that, you know, our patient experience is our primary focus. How are the people we're serving? How are we taking care of them, ensuring that those gaps are filled and that they're getting the care that they need. So our community paramedic team has been able to integrate with the community, identify gaps, work with partner relationships and partner organizations to ensure that if there is holes in our community, we're there to do everything we can to support those individuals in filling those gaps and taking best care of our community. Point two on that was, actually, council was all part of this, our GIS was part of this, and Metavi GIS was this, and that was the acquisition of the property for our new Loyalist base. Great discussion with council, thank you, councillor, you know, held us to the fire and made sure that we provided evidence-based data to support our decisions, which is what I always want to do. I don't want to do anything ad hoc. We were able to answer all your questions, and council supported our decision in where we recommended the new base be, purchase the property and build the base. So we're super excited about the next steps for that, and I'm sure we'll be having lots of conversations with council about that. One of the other things we've done, we've engaged with an additional mental health support. As you know, our job can be, the paramedic services can be a challenging job, and so we not only have our peer supports, we've invested with Breakwater to provide during CME this year, so our continuing medical education days, an additional mental health support for them to better understand, protect themselves, prepare themselves to serve as a paramedic. And if they identify struggles, deal with them earlier rather than later, therefore preventing, you know, a long-term illness and a PTSD-type injury. Additionally, we've, on the financial side of the house, we've leveraged Metavi's bulk purchasing power. Obviously, Metavi is a Canadian-wide corporation, and we've been able to leverage the purchasing power on medical supplies, uniforms, preferred pricing on DFIBs, all of the equipment we use. Because Metavi is able to secure those contracts because they're buying for Canada-wide, we've been able to leverage that. So that's been an amazing opportunity that's found efficiencies, not only financially, but human resource efficiencies. And more, one of the other things, we're looking for opportunities, Metavi has a foundation that they donate locally, they encourage local donation, so we're looking for opportunities to support, you know, whether it's vulnerable individuals or whatever the case may be within our community through the Metavi Foundation. Fostering a culture, so we definitely, I myself, the deputy chiefs, we've definitely insisted on that open communication with our paramedics. We do not want things to fester, we want to talk about them early and often. We may not necessarily agree, but that's okay. So we've definitely instilled that in our union relationships, we've definitely improved the union relationships and management relationship and the county's relationship with the union. It's become much less adversarial, which is an amazing opportunity, we're going to continue to do that. We've implemented, this is something that staff asked for in the identified things that they were looking for, was a long-service medal. So we were able to work again with Metavi to find a supplier of those medals, and we plan to have a ceremony, including of the warden, this year to acknowledge those paramedics who have worked 12, 20, and 30 years. Very important to medics, not many of us make 30 years, I am one in the room sadly. But to acknowledge that long service, it is a tough job, and we want to, you know, reward those, even if it's just a small thing with a medal on their chest, it means a lot to them, and we're very excited to be able to implement that within our service. We continue to enhance relationships, we had an employer-relationship committee meeting today, went swimmingly, we were all laughing and joking and have a good time, but got a lot of good work done and moving, making steps to build the future. We've expanded our leadership team by adding Deputy Chief Paul Osborne to the mix. The reason that was important, previously, Rob, God bless him, did two full-time jobs essentially in dealing with the professional standards part of the house as well as the operations part of the house. This has allowed Rob some opportunity to breathe occasionally, and Paul takes on now that, sort of that professional development, the quality assurance role that paramedics need and we're legislated to have, and he's done a great job. So that's allowed our team, and it's also provided clarity for our staff, which is truly important. Previously, you know, they didn't know who to go to, they didn't want to bother Rob if they thought he was busy, but this has allowed them to know that if it's a patient care issue, they direct it to Paul, if it's an operational issue, they're directing things to Rob. So that's, it's been a nice addition to our team, and thanks to the CAO for supporting that initiative. I attended personally every CME we had this year, did what I called the fireside chat, and that went over exceptionally well. We were able to take some ideas and frustrations that paramedics experience, we were able to celebrate our successes and move together as a team, helping them understand that we're there to support them, to do the best we can for the patient. Ongoing negotiations, which we're currently in, we have engaged Metavi Staff Council, and it's been an amazing opportunity to see a professional such as he is guide those discussions and allow us to have a very, very productive negotiation so far. So we're super excited about that. What else do we have here? We've allowed, through Metavi again, we've allowed those individuals that are interested in expanding their career and their horizons to enroll in a Harvard educational opportunity. So there's Harvard Business Courses that are available through Metavi to our staff members that are interested in those leadership opportunities. Corporate culture, obviously, we embrace and enhance DEI, that goes through, again, through the county HR department with expertise provided by Metavi HR Department. So we're able to ensure that we're meeting all the needs of the community with regards to DEI. Sorry, I'm being respectful of council's time here, I could ramble on forever. We have, so again, we introduced MCAD and MPDS, so mobile computer-aid dispatch. So we're moving away from a $5,000 computer in front of the ambulance to a $700 iPad. The technology's better, it leverages tablet technology, so iOS technology, we're able to put apps on these computers, there isn't Windows updates, they work better, they're so much cheaper, if one gets broken, we can buy four compared to one price of the broken computer. So this is what our team has met and understood and found opportunities to provide a better service for a lower price. One thing we're super excited about, as we transition to mobile dispatch and PDS, because of Metavi, we've also engaged with a service called First Watch. Essentially, what First Watch is, is a big data retriever, receiver from all of our dispatch data, and then they correlate it and make it into usable data for us. So one big issue for us, whether I, if I was to come to council to make a recommendation to enhance staffing, I want that to be evidence-based. One of those parameters that this First Watch allows us to use is called unit hour utilization. So how much of a day is a paramedic crew actually working on calls? Before, that would have been a labor-intensive process, and it would have been a guesswork at best. This new solution will allow us, click of a button, to find out our unit hour utilization, whether it's by station, by day of the week, by hour of day. It's an amazing opportunity for us to provide council with more appropriate and fulsome data that is evidence-based, and we're lucky to have that. With regards to CP, because of our relationship and the opportunities we saw to enhance our position within the community, we were able to get into the Lenox building over at the hospital with all the primary care physicians, and we were able to get Ministry of Health to actually pay for that because they were very excited about that integration, and we just sort of put our walls up and said, well, okay, if you're interested and you want it, how about you invest in it? So they paid for all the renos for that, to make that happen, that was approximately $80,000, so. No, no, no cost to the taxpayer, no hit to the levy, no hit to our budget. So those are additional dollars. And that's it. We're introducing technologies, one of those opportunities is operative IQ, it's going to improve communications throughout our entire team. Essentially, it's a digital way for us to communicate using emails that are already in existence, using the tablets that will now be in the front of the truck, and the iPhones that are in front of the truck. So we're very excited about that introduction to our staff. It allows for better seamless communication within our team. I'm going to hand it over. Deputy Chief Robbie Burns.
Thanks, Craig, and thanks, Mike. So I thought it might be important for everybody to hear how this transition has actually gone. As Mike said early on, there was a lot of fear, with change comes fear, comes, you know, all of these concerns, and I'm sure that was on your side, too. And I'm here to say, I commend everybody here that was involved, Brenda, everybody that was involved in the decision to bring Metavi in as a partner. This has been an excellent experience. We have managed to go past barriers and challenges that I didn't think we'd actually get by, and that's in a big part to Mike, to Craig, and to the entire Metavi team. Darcy's sitting at the back here. Everybody sat down, we became, we gelled as a team, we put everything on the table, we looked at the problems, we looked at the opportunities, and we kept what worked, and we got rid of what didn't, and we've built on that. And so for those that took the chance on this partnership, it was fantastic, and I can't say enough, it's been really good. I'm looking forward to continuing it. And yeah, we've got big things to come, we fostered good relationships, we're fostering a good culture within the service, we're starting to build those teams at the frontline, between management, between employees. It's all good. We have been able to realize economies of scale, we have talked to others in other services that work in the Metavi ecosystem, and we're able to share information. This has all been of mutual benefit to everybody. So I just wanted to take an opportunity here to commend everybody on taking that chance. I think it was well rewarded, and yeah, so thank you. Appreciate it.
And if there's, through you, if there's any questions, we'd be happy as a team to take them.
Thank you very much, chief. I'll turn to council first. Comments, questions for the chief? Councillor Wise.
Yeah, can you hear me, Nate?
Yep, you're very good, Councillor Wise, carry on.
Okay, good, yeah. I don't have any questions, I read the report, and it was very interesting. What I just wanted to say is how encouraging it is to hear so many positive statements. We know that the service went through some difficulties, and we did take a chance, going the route we did with Metavi. It was one of Brenda's inspired ideas, and to see it paying off, just the attitude that's coming through, the enthusiasm, is just really encouraging, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
I'd just like to thank you, I know Dickens was quoted earlier, I'll quote Churchill and say that never was so much owed by so many to so few. And, you know, you three have done a great job, you know, leadership is a term that gets bandied around a lot, but it's really nice to see what leadership truly looks like, and the results you've achieved in the short amount of time that you've achieved them is really quite astounding, and I echo everything that Councillor Wise said. So my thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks, Councillor.
Can I get a motion to receive? Councillor Fritsch, seconded by Councillor Calver. Any more comments? All those in favor, call the question. Motion is carried. Number two, tariff response. I'm going to turn to the CAO first.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Of course, a lot in the news about tariffs, a lot for municipalities to consider when it comes to resolutions that municipalities are making, or efforts that they're taking to support the business community through economic development and looking at their own procurement policies. So rather than do three separate reports to you, we had our three directors get together to do this one report, so I'm going to turn it over to each of them in succession to just give you any highlights or anything they want to say, and then we'll turn it back to you as council. So Tracy's first.
Through you, Mr. Warden. So the beginning of the report really just talks about resolutions and what's been going on across the province. So as council is aware, a resolution came forward from EOWC in early February, and council did support that. Then there's several resolutions included on this agenda. Many of them are quite similar, some of them have just a little bit of a different edge to them, some are more about sovereignty, some are about breaking down barriers for inter-provincial trade, some are just encouraging the government to fight the tariffs. So I guess all we're, at this point, we're just asking if council may wish to pass their own resolution, or you may want to just continue to support those from other municipalities that you find you would like to support. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for the clerk before we move on to the next director? Very well. So over to you, Mr. Paul.
Okay, thank you. So from an economic development perspective in this report, have included some data that speaks to just total exports to the United States across the province. Kind of drilling that down a little bit regionally, from an eastern Ontario perspective, it's approximately $42.5 billion is exported annually from the region. And in the chart that I provided, again, it speaks to the large numbers of exports that are going to the United States. And then to the column to the right, we've just indicated the total number of businesses that would be really part of that, that NIGS code or that sector. So we can't necessarily do the math and know exactly what our exports are, but we know they're significant, absolutely. And when you're looking at probably 70% of everything that's made here crosses the border. So again, we're at a point that is making many of us, of course, extremely nervous. So with that, we're really looking at a two-pronged approach of how we can support our businesses. The first would be really down to the nitty-gritty of coaching, business coaching, of how we can support them. And I can say over the last month, those numbers have dramatically increased. We're fortunate that we have right now a part-time business coach who is extremely busy supporting our businesses, in many cases, just answering questions and trying to make people feel as good as possible with the unknown that's there as well. So we'll continue that, we'll understand hopefully soon what the tariffs truly mean. Maybe we may never know that, but it's hard to react at this point in time based on just news cycles. So hopefully, as a little bit more clarity with regards to programs that might be available and supports that might be available, and we'll do our best to help businesses with those. And then we'll also be looking at the consumer side of how we can really push the buy-local, buy-Canadian, and that'll, of course, really drive with what's happening right now, and much of that is taking place right across the whole marketplace in Canada. But we want to make sure that, as we do every single day, but even amp it up more about the businesses we have here, the Canadian businesses we have here, and how we can support those. We'll be launching a marketing campaign, a digital campaign, the next two weeks. We'll be going door-to-door, we're actually looking at purchasing kind of little flags or pennants that our businesses can hang on their windows, they're, you know, Canadian business, and from that, we'll then drive traffic to their websites and hopefully increase their sales as well. So every little bit will help with regards to this, and we're ready to do that and happy to answer any questions you may have or comments, that, you know, things that we may be able to do to support businesses additionally to this.
Thanks, Mr. Paul. Any questions for Mr. Paul on the economic development side of this piece? Yep, Councillor Fritsch.
Yes, through Mr. Warden. I guess the question I have here is for, is how can the lower tiers, what's sort of the best relationship the lower tiers can have with the upper so that we can, I guess, best utilize our time in supporting, I guess, the initiatives and being in a collaborative relationship with the county? Because there's probably things we can do as well in communication and in addition to what you're doing.
Definitely. You know, I think, I think communication is actually the key piece with regards to this. You know, firstly, it's as simple as making sure that businesses are on our business directory, you know, they list the products that they sell, their website address is there. We do our best to make sure that they're all contributing to that, but I think we have about 700-plus businesses on our directory now, there's more that need to be part of that, so that will help us. And then I think probably even the most important thing is being a bit veneer to the ground for us. So if you or your staff hear of a business that may be struggling, they have concerns, they have a lot of different questions, then just really get them in touch with us, and that'll, that'll make a huge difference as well, so that we can provide that support immediately. And sometimes we don't hear that directly, you may, or your staff may, or just people in the community that you might hear at the grocery store, just have them contact us.
Okay, just to make sort of a statement, not a question, I guess, is, yeah, so I guess in discussions, because most of us, because all of us would have some discussions with businesses, local businesses, so, and maybe, maybe talking about this and their concerns, so I guess if it appears that they're looking for some help or advice, then we just direct them to the county as one of the sources of help.
Yes, yeah, and then, and then from there, I mean, we can actually kind of help distribute that help as well, so, you know, someone may be looking at support, well, for example, there's two programs that are available right now. One actually would allow a company, a larger company predominantly, to do potential layoffs at a part-time basis, and then so the individual could work part-time and get EI part-time, so that's been extended for a year. So there's a program such as that. There also, we project there'll be the possibility to be looking at what they call remissions of tariffs, so if there's certain goods that are crucial to a company, and particularly those that may have a higher employee base, there may be ways of looking at grants or dollars coming back, we're kind of projecting that as well. I mean, I hate to say that this is probably a similar process to what we went through with the pandemic, we're kind of dusting off some of those things as well, but it's probably fair to say that it's, it's going to be a full-court press of what we can do with businesses to support them and make sure that they thrive. And I think probably most importantly, look at how they adjust their business planning, who their customers are, because there's probably not an end date with regards to this, it's now kind of the next generation of our businesses and where their customers need to be. I think if it's, anything that's happened with regards to this, it's brought it very clearly to light that we need to be broader-based when it comes to who we're selling to. And I think if we do that properly now, that'll help us in the future, too. And that, I mean, that's for big companies like Goodyear to, you know, smaller companies that, well, I'll give you an example, my wife has an online business, and 75% of her business goes to the United States. Well, I'll give you an example. My, my wife has an online business and 75% of her business goes to the United States. And no one knows about her business probably other than me, but she's going to need to make adjustments to that potentially.
Other comments, questions for Mr. Paul? Then I'll turn over to Mr. Day.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. The part of the report there regarding procurement strategies, first of all, outlines kind of the legal framework that we have to abide by during our procurement policies. That has been listed in there. I know there's been a lot of talk if we can do anything with our purchasing policies. So we are going to be looking internally at our own. I did have a meeting last week with the lower-tier treasurers to discuss this issue. And they are looking at obviously your own procurement policies and if there's anything that can be done. We are, you know, trying to determine, going to keep track of the tariffs if they are affecting some of the prices on the vendors. I know if there's any big, larger projects that we'd look for a change order to see what the tariff implications are. But it's such a moving target, it's really hard to predict what the cost implications will be. But we're hoping we'll be able to track it with that. The treasurers, even today, I had a meeting with the Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario for the county treasurers, and it was a topic on the agenda as well. We're very aware that some of even US companies have local subsidiaries in Canada that employ Canadian employees and Ontario employees that we want to support them too. But the main goal is we have to be competitive, local, and also transparent and abide by our rules and regulations for purchasing, that we do get a fair price for our products and services. So I'm happy to answer any questions that counsel may have.
Any questions for Mr. Day with respect to procurement financial issues? Counselor Wise.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to Stephen and Tracy and Mark. Mark, in your, in your report, which is very thorough, there's a section on a legal framework governing municipal procurement. And there's, there's real irony in there. As you rightly say, we are bound to follow international and national agreements, trade agreements in our, in our purchasing policy. And yet the crisis that we're in is the result of a rogue president on the, on the false premise of stopping fentanyl, crossing the border and immigration problems. In fact, breaking the trade agreement that we are supposedly legally obliged to abide by. I'm hoping that the national and provincial leadership will find a way to suspend or modify those requirements based on the blatant violation by the Trump administration of those agreements. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wise. Others. So we have essentially, you know, a two-part recommendation here. The one is obviously to receive the report, but the other is to provide direction to staff as to, you know, what we want to do as our own response. Are we, is there an appetite to put forward a resolution of our own that's catered to our own perspective as Lennox and Addington, as other municipalities have? Or are we content to simply endorse other resolutions that have come across our desk? Obviously, EOWC being the most recent. So we can just have a brief discussion about that. I would entertain perspectives. Counselor Calver.
I like the other option where we just wait for further developments regarding the proposed tariffs to see what's happening. Every day, things change moment to moment. I would just hate to do some sort of a knee-jerk reaction that may end up biting us down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Calver. Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Warden. I tend to agree with the sentiment of Counselor Calver. I believe that for the most part, the municipally-led organizations such as the EOWC, AMO, Roma, and FCM, and that's just to name a few that we've seen the motions come through. They're providing concise and effective motions, which provides a unified voice as well. And I think that that's quite important. So I agree that I think it would be wise to just consider, continue considering others' motions for the suitability to us and our county until such time as it's identified that there's a need for a motion. And I guess really this stems, we want to maintain the respect of this council, of the staff and of the county. So my thought to that is that really I'm not fond of ostinatious actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Others. Counselor Fritsch.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, similar to others, I'm more inclined to support or to, to look at resolutions of others or the organizations that we're part of and pick and choose between them. Because this, as we all know, this is changing by the hour, by the day, and we do not know what it's going to look like tomorrow or the day after. So we will know and we need to take action of our own, I think.
Thank you, Counselor Fritsch. Others. Yep, Counselor Wise.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree. We don't need to craft any, any statement that's particular to the county because I think most of the municipal organizations and larger municipalities are singing in harmony. I would at least make the motion that this council supports the position of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus on this issue.
Thank you, Counselor Wise. We did actually do that in February, so we have endorsed that position.
Thank you for reminding me. I've been sick.
Yeah, no, not at all. But it's worth, it's worth noting for the record because I think we're all in agreement with that particular one. Other comments? I would just add my own then. I agree with, with what others have said. I mean, I think, I think messages are always more powerful if they're clear. And if there's one voice and one message, I think, to be honest with you, from my point of view, that's why we have AMO and Roma and EOWC, et cetera. And that is not to disparage, you know, other individual municipalities from feeling the need to do so themselves. I think we are in extraordinary times. My concern is that we, we as the municipal order of government don't lose focus with what our responsibilities are in the sense that whilst I completely agree that we should support our other orders in defending our sovereignty and defending our economy, you know, it's our services that take care of Canadians and we take care of our services. And, you know, we have a new government that was just sworn in with a majority mandate and their hands on the levers of power. And there are issues that we need them to address. There's still 80,000 homeless people in Ontario. There's a primary care physician shortage. There's a housing crisis. You know, the list goes on. We have, you know, a fiscal framework that doesn't work. So in terms of resilience of Canada in the coming challenges, there are lots of issues that are going to be on our plate. And I think the public ought to be inspired that we are, we've got our finger on, on that pulse. And, and I'm happy to leave the nuances of international relations to the other orders. Those are just my thoughts. Any other reflections? Then I would entertain a motion to receive the report and... Okay, Counselor Wise, seconded by Counselor Davison. Is the direction to staff clear on that? Yeah, okay. Then with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Item number three, LSAA Declaration of Compliance. I'll turn to the Director of Long Term Care.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This is an annual requirement to counsel to confirm that, in my role as the Director, that I have provided you information and pertinent to what you would like to have and that we as a home remain compliant with the Ministry ELSA agreements that we have in place. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Malcolm? Then I'd entertain a motion to adopt the recommendation. Counselor Fritsch, seconded by Deputy Warden Hegadorn. Any further comment? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Emergency response vehicle replacement. Over to Chief.
Report for you is recommend a replacement of a 2010 Expedition with a 2025 Expedition. Our replacement cycle is seven years, so this, this one's gone a little outside of our, our normal replacement cycle. This vehicle currently is getting excessively expensive to repair, so it's gotten to the point where we couldn't nurse it any longer. In Ontario, an emergency response vehicle must meet specific standards as outlined by the province through the emergency response vehicle standards. And therefore, only one provider within the province of Ontario is authorized to perform those conversions on a Ford Expedition. So we're sought out, consulted with the finance to ensure that we are in alignment with the purchasing policy and we're seeking approval to purchase within budget.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions with regard to that report? Seeing none, can I get a mover to adopt the recommendation? Counselor Calver, seconded by Counselor Richardson. Any further comment? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Activation fund. Over to Mr. Paul.
Okay, thank you. I have another slate of applications for activation fund in front of you this evening, looking for, for your approval. Want to thank the Economic Development Coalition for the work that they do assessing these. And I should note, each of these events, we do speak to local municipalities and they've helped us with the due diligence of those. So I'd be happy to answer any questions with regards to this slate of applications to be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a mover to adopt the recommendation? Counselor Calver, seconded by Counselor Wise. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Number six, asset management plan. Turn to Mr. Day first.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Before I use an updated asset management plan that we're looking for counsel's approval, just want to mention in 2022, when the last update was done, we did mention to counsel that this is a living document. And I'm very pleased to say that Infrastructure Services, along with GIS, use this report constantly to help with their budgeting and moving forward. And it's a, it's a great tool. We're looking for approval. And I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Waiger, who has a little bit of a demonstration on how he does utilize the asset management plan.
Thank you. Through, through you, Mr. Warden. First off, just to build on what Mark was saying, I really got to thank GIS staff and finance staff and Infrastructure Services staff for putting this together. The asset management plan that was done in 2022 went out to an outside service provider. In 2024, we completed this in-house, so at a greatly reduced cost. And within about two weeks, using the software CityWorks and Predictor that we have as a tool to use. So as we start, asset management. So there's two definitions. There's a technical one. Asset management is the process of planning, operating, maintaining, renewing and disposable assets to maximize their value while minimizing costs and risk. Or essentially, we just use the right treatment at the right time. Both boil down to spend as little money as possible to keep the level of service the way it is. The tools we use. So when we go to site, whether it's a road, a bridge, or a building, we do visual inspections. We have mobile apps. We, we store the data. We have ESRI, ArcGIS and ESRI CityWorks. And then we have a recommendation or financial analysis software, Brightly Predictor, which I'll be walking through that here shortly. I will add to that, so all of what you're seeing is just going to be a sample of, of roads. That's typically what I know most. And it is the major cost of the municipalities. When you, when you look at everything, typically 70 to 80% of a municipal's costs are associated with roads, whether it's operation or capital. So that's why I've selected that as a tool. But we have our buildings, our bridges, streetlights, everything's broken down. So what you're going to see is just the roadway. It's not the storm sewer or anything. It's just, just roads. So as we get started, once we're out in the field, we have apps that were created by our GIS staff through ESRI. And it allows us to identify what section of the road we're on. So like using GPS, it knows where we are. And we just click, conduct an inspection, and it pre-populates the data. I just chose County Road 6. It's one of the ones that's in our Hot Mix Program this year. So it's fresh in everyone's minds. That's the one I chose. But it lets us know the location, you know, traffic. And then, so we start into the actual condition rating. So it looks at ride comfort. It looks at drainage condition. Pavement condition is made up of a bunch of different, a bunch of different factors. Coarse aggregate loss, flushing, wheel track rutting, distortion, potholes, pavement edge longitudinal cracking, alligator cracking. All of those, we give it a rating. There's like a percentage, so it does like, there's four, there's zero to 10, 10 to 30, 30 to 70 or greater than 70. And the condition is like one through four. None to light, to moderate, to severe. And everything that we put in has a weighted factor. And at the end of the day, we get a rating. So the overall rating for this County Road 6 is 26. And then here's just on the right-hand side, you'll see, it's just a clip of the southern portion of the municipality. And you can see like each road, it's hard to tell on the slide, my apologies. But each, each road comes up and you can click on a road and look at it as a whole or within the municipality. And then here's our municipality as a whole. We do have a lot of, a lot of green, like our roads are in very good condition, which I'll go through here shortly as well. So this is, I did select the County Road 28 for this one because we recently reconstructed it. So you can see back in 2016, it had a rating of about 67, I believe. It went down to like 32.7, 35.7. And then we reconstructed and now it's up to 98, 99. Again, it's hard to read off that, but it just shows you the, the progression of that section of road and its rating. And that's what we use to calculate our overall level of service and our overall condition of our infrastructure. So right now, this is a snapshot of our actual rating. So green is good. Light green is still good. Yellow is good. It just means it's, we got to start thinking of a treatment. And then the red and pink are reconstruction projects. Currently, we're at 78.6. So if you remember from a previous presentation during orientation, we want to keep the rating rate around 75. But we don't want to be above 75 for too long because it does appear overfunded. So we're going to, our target is 75. And I'll explain how that varies without actually changing money. So it's like if you lower the cost, doesn't necessarily mean your rating is going to go down. Or if you increase the cost, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to go up unless you put a lot of money or take a lot of money out of it. So financial analysis. So through TAC, this is like the lifespan curve of the road. So we selected a curve. We had, I don't know, there was about 50 or 60 curves we could have used that the software provided. We selected one that was an average one for the municipalities as well as the county. And through that, that builds and predicts what the condition will be five years or 10 years out. So an example of that, so this brown line is your typical curve. So if we have a road or an asset and we start noticing that the green line up here, it's actually acting or behaving better, like it's not degrading as much as we thought, whether that's through maintenance or maybe the asphalt was a little bit, little bit better or traffic is reduced on that road. The software itself will... The software itself will extend and modify the prediction, and it will take the standard curve, and it will expand it out to what the new curve shows, and we see that in the software. Vice versa, if we have, if you look at the red line, if a road is starting to degrade quicker, maybe there's high traffic, or there's a drainage problem, or whatever, again, the software predicts what that'll do to the road based on the decline that it's seeing, and it deviates from the standard curve that we have. So targets. So again, if you have your basic curve, we have our typical treatments of an asphalt road, rejuvenator, micro-surface, they're both preservation strategies. Then we get into resurfacing, which is typically what we do now, which is the sandy overlay. With the one lift-up hot mix overlay, we did that on County Road Forty-One last year, County Road One in Stone Mills a couple of years ago, and we're planning to do that this year on County Road Six as well. You see that is a target of sixty, but it is recommended that once it hits seventy, but whether it hits seventy or sixty, it's still recommended that treatment. So we have a target right now of sixty so that it doesn't fall into the fifty-five category, because once it falls into fifty-five, it's going to recommend the next treatment, the rehabilitation. So I'd rather spend sixty-five dollars a square meter this year than wait about two years and spend eighty-five dollars a square meter, and that's what this software does. It basically creates your capital plan, and that's what we use to present to council. So again, like, so target of forty for a rehabilitation, target of twenty-five for reconstruction. Target of twenty-five, we didn't select the bottom, we selected somewhere middle range. It's actually thirty-five to zero, but once we notice that a road gets about to twenty-five or less, we actually start seeing safety concerns. So again, to mitigate the risk to the municipalities, we use the twenty-five so that we can still, you know, salvage some of the granularity in there, but we don't have any like big blowouts or potholes that bring a lot of risk to the municipalities. Okay, in the software, it doesn't just do a treatment and then skip to the next treatment, say twenty years later after that treatment's done. We have it set in here that we can micro-surface, and as long as it's above eighty-five, we're going to continue to, sorry, rejuvenate, and then anything above seventy-five, we're going to micro-surface. Once it gets into the resurfacing, we'll do that up to three times. Now, if you look at the threshold and the improvement gain, so the threshold's ninety-seven, which means if you do a resurfacing, it's not going to be a hundred because it's not a brand-new road, there's still some old asphalt that we overlaid. But if we don't see an improvement of ninety-two when we do the treatment, it's going to kick down and recommend reconstruction the next time because it's not, we're not getting the bang for our buck out of that treatment, so it's not going to last as long as we thought it would. So here's our costs. You'll see all of our applications here, and the number of applications, and these are essentially our cost. Reconstruction's the highest, rejuvenation is the lowest. It also does forecasting, so we can look at it and do, well, where do we need to be? Do we have a fifteen million dollar budget, or do we have a twenty-two million dollar budget? So again, looking at that seventy-five, we wanted to be somewhere as close as one-point-four-eight or one-point, I think it's five-two is what actually works out to seventy-five percent. And it is a little bit different, it's in a state, so zero to six, it's just not at a one to ten, so that's why zero equals a hundred, two equals sixty-six point six-six. So anyway, if you look at the condition rating, the number of the fifteen million, which is the dark blue, fifteen million a year doesn't change, but you'll see how the graph changes. So it starts off high, it goes down, some of the ones, like if you look at the seventeen point eight, it actually goes back up and then kind of comes back down where fifteen stays down. So just because we're spending fifteen million dollars or seventeen point eight, it changes, like we're not going to, it's not going to hold steady at seventy-five percent, it's going to fluctuate through the years based on what treatments we do and the overall length of each road segment. So in the summary, we can look at our budget, so I have the four here, the same ones, our treatment costs. This is one item we don't have. We don't have the maintenance cost, or the operational cost, or the user cost. This is all data that we're going to start collecting with that new, the new position that was proposed to council, and getting more reports so we can actually identify how much our system's costing us. Then the next stage, you can go into Treatment Breakdown. This is the first year, so this is what the software projects. So here's the cost of your micro-surface, your rehabilitation, your rejuvenator, and you'll see the costs here in year one. You know, this is, that's how much they want to spend in micro-surface, this is how much in rehabilitation for all of our treatments. And if you look at year four, that has changed again because it's doing the right treatment at the right time. So treatments will change, and our budget will relatively stay the same so that it's easier for taxpayers and municipal staff to manage contracts. So this is what the council sees, and we did add this year, I don't know if you noticed the colors, so these colors are what we use to identify, to see if we're going to hit our target the right. So if you go back to that slide of the target rating, we don't want to see anything in red. Red's bad. The reason why County Road Six is red, we should be reconstructing that road. We applied for that HECS funding, we didn't get it. There's some development with the Amisview West Secondary Plan. So as that builds out, there's going to be road improvement. So we're just looking to buy our time, and let's put like a Band-Aid on that road. So that's why we're just going to resurface and do an overlay. We hope to get ten to twelve years of that road for that process, which will allow us at that time, the build-out will be maximized, and we can do intersection upgrades at the time of need rather than spending the money now without provincial funding or federal funding. Then you'll see the orange or the tan, and then moving into the yellow. Orange or tan are the ones you want to see in your current year or your following year, and your yellow, you want to see in your second or third or fourth year. Skip to the six to ten year, you'll see all the greens here. That just tells us we're on the right track, and they'll eventually change colors, and which will then move up into our five-year plan accordingly. So we are changing our roads a little bit more than what you used to see, but again, it goes back to that right treatment at the right time, so we're not spending any additional money or wasting money where we don't have to. So overall, this is the final summary of the ten-year capital plan. So our five-year average is twenty-point-nine million with a ten-year average of twenty-one point two-eight. So why twenty-one million when we're at seventeen point eight million is what we're projecting to be at, that seventy-five percent? Well, we have three million dollars approximately in new road construction, so the Taylor Kidd Extension, the Napanee Bypass, property acquisition, all of that stuff is in the budget, as well as signage, signalization, vehicle software, ditching, and storm sewers. Like, again, this was just for the asphalt. The twenty-one million is the overall budget for roads and bridges. So again, again, following the why the seventeen point eight. So if you look at the ten-year term, seventeen point eight gave us a rate as close as we could to the seventy-five percent, but as year two, you'll notice sixteen point five and seventeen point eight both give us the rating of the one-point-five, which equals seventy-five point eight-three. But year six, the seventeen point eight is at sixty-nine point eight-three, so it's dropped down below, and actually, I think that should have been moved over there, to year five, or maybe year five's a little bit lower than that. No, no, actually, sorry, that is the right one. My apologies. So seventeen point eight is at sixty-nine point eight-three, so it drops below that seventy percent, which we don't want to drop below, but then it comes back up where the other, the sixteen point five stays down. So that's again why we chose the seventeen point eight. This is available to all municipal staff with the municipalities, like we share this, we use it together, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Thank you, Mr. Wagler. Questions from council with respect to the Asset Management Plan? Yep, that was very thorough. Thank you, Mr. Wagler.
Thank you.
So we have a recommendation to receive the report and approve the Asset Management Plan as presented. Counselor Calver moves, seconded by Deputy Warden. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, motion is carried. POA interim transfer agreement. Mr. Day.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Before you, council's tonight is looking for authorization to extend the Part III agreement by two years. It's directed to us from the province to extend the agreement, and there's been no issues with that we've had so far, and it's just an extension.
Any technical questions? Seeing none, I take a motion to adopt the recommendation as presented. Counselor Richardson, seconded by Counselor Davison. Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion is carried. Public sector salary disclosure.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Before you, under requirements of the Municipal Act, is your report for public disclosure on the public salary?
Any questions on that? Can I get a motion to receive that then? Counselor Fritsch, seconded by Counselor Calver. All those in favor, motion is carried. Council remuneration and expenses.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Again, is there a report for, under the Municipal Act, for council's approval?
Deputy Warden, you move the recommendation? Seconded by Counselor Wise. Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion is carried. And budget summary.
Again, through you, Mr. Warden. Before you tonight, you'll see later on the agenda are the tax rates and ratios prepared from our budget deliberations in the month of February. Our budget document has been updated for those budget enhancements and changes that we had at the last meeting of a little over a hundred ninety thousand. So we're looking for the approval of the tax rates and ratios by a lot further on, but just as the highlight in the report, as council is well aware, that we're looking at a levy increase of a little over one-point-four million, which represents a four-point-two percent increase from last year's levy net of growth. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions from council with respect to the summary? Again, it's all very clear, based on what we've discussed. Seeing none, I take a motion to receive. Then Counselor Fritsch, seconded by Counselor Davison. All those in favor, motion is carried. Advisory Committee Recommendations and Reports. Economic Development Coalition.
Nothing to add, Mr. Warden.
Any questions with respect to the Economic Development Coalition? Technical Advisory Committee.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I don't have anything to add or highlight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Counselor Wise.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. A very thorough TAC report, a lengthy meeting with interest and discussion. I was just curious, Chris, about the tree removal tender, specifically about the number of dead ash trees we've got along county roads. Is there a specific sort of program to identify some of those dead ash trees, and how are you approaching that risk?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So in consultation with township staff, we're identifying the hazards, like the ones that could fall on a road or on a property to damage private property, and those ones are being addressed first. The ones on the right-of-way that are along like a farmer's field, or where we have a wider right-of-way, and the boulevard is wide enough that should that tree fall, it's not going to get into the driving lane, those are being left till later until we have a little bit more money. So we're just trying to balance it out, so again, we don't do it all at once, we're just looking at the high-risk ones first, and then we'll be attacking the other ones in future years.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'll move on to Emergency Services Advisory Committee.
Thank you, through you, Warden. The reports are ready, if there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the chief? Lastly, then, the John M. Parrott Centered Compliance Report.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As you can see in the compliance report, we have had a very busy January and February with our move-ins. Up substantially, last year we only had sixteen at this time, and this year we're at twenty-three. Again, that represents quite a significant amount of work as far as bringing residents in for all the departments, whether it be painting the walls or the enormous amount of paperwork that comes with an admission. As far as staffing goes, the PSWs are certainly enjoying the care that they can provide with having four staff per home area, and residents are also very much appreciating this extra amount of support that they are receiving. We are struggling significantly with attracting a nurse practitioner. We have offered it, this is to cover a maternity leave that we have coming up, we have offered a part-time and a full-time position with zero interest. I did seek a couple of agencies to see if that was even an option, and there are agency nurse practitioners available. I historically am opposed to agencies, however, I don't have a nurse practitioner, so I did reach out to the ministry, and the ministry is not willing to support through the Hiring More Nurse Practitioners Fund that we are currently utilizing for our nurse practitioner at this time. They're not willing to support an agency nurse practitioner. So this is something that, as council may want to consider advocating for long-term care homes, because if we can't attract a nurse practitioner through our traditional methods, there are no options available to us. This is a significant burden for, specifically for our medical director, who has ninety-five percent of our residents, and so the notion of not having a nurse practitioner to assist and support is a significant workload increase on him specifically. But this would apply to other long-term care homes as well, who find themselves in this kind of position. In terms of quality, I did tell you last month that we are switching to a different data collection process, and it is not ready, so I'm not able to share that with you, but I really do hope that I will have something for you next month. And nothing particular as far as the infection control is concerned. We are currently have already had six enteric outbreaks, which is your nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea. They have largely been recovering fairly quickly, so that was good. In line with that, we did have the Ministry of Labor attend the home as a result of the three staff members being affected by the enteric outbreak. And we did receive two orders as a result of that. One of them was because the signage that is required to be placed on each resident-impacted door did not have, one door did not have the signage, so that was frustrating. Other doors did, but not that one. And then the other one was that each resident room that is in an outbreak or is having symptoms has to have a doffing, meaning a garbage can in which to place the PPE. And while there was one across the hallway, there wasn't one outside of this residence room, and so therefore, we got the order. Both of these orders were rectified right away, and they came back and re-inspected, and we're now fine. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Counselor Wise.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the one thing I did note in your report, Angela, was the nurse practitioner gap due to a maternity leave. It seems to me this is the one place that funding an agency nurse would make sense, especially in the job market where there are, you know, a shortage of practitioners for full-time positions. So I would move, and I certainly haven't crafted a motion, that the council write to the ministry. write to the ministry to point out this, this problem of covering things like maternity leave. We aren't looking to, to staff using agency nurses on an ongoing semi-permanent basis. We're simply trying to cover gaps. So, so I would move that we appeal to the ministry to provide some funding for use of agency nurses, however you want to word it, Angela, in consultation with the clerk, to cover things like maternity leave, staffing gaps.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wise. I'll take that motion. I'll, I, what I'm going to do, Counselor Wise, is I'll add to your motion that you'll receive that particular report, the John M. Parrott Center compliance report, and then direct staff to advocate on the county's behalf with respect to funding a nurse practitioner through agency. Can I get a second or for Counselor Wise's motion? Counselor Davison, discussion? Then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. And then can I get a motion to receive all of the other reports? The Economic Development Coalition, Technical Advisory Committee and Emergency Services. Counselor Hogg, seconded by Counselor Fritsch. Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Committee reports by members of council. Any reports? Seeing none, we'll move to County Department Activity Reports. I'll turn to the CAO.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just one thing I want to highlight. You'll note in the report the helping people live their best lives. So, that's the common purpose that we came up with. I want to thank senior leadership team, Tracy, Seth and Beth Redman for their work on rolling this out with all of our departments. We think it's really meaningful for everybody, and I think it's meaningful for council too. I mean, we're all striving to help our residents and our visitors experience the best that they can experience, whether you're in the Roads Department making the roads safe for people, or especially if you're paramedics, or if you're in long-term care, any of our departments. We're all striving to serve our ratepayers and help people live their best lives, and I think you do that as council as well, which is why you have T-shirts too. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on the whole report.
Any questions for the CAO? Seeing none, I'll move to Mr. Day.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The only thing I'd like to highlight in the report is I'd like to welcome Tom Magna, who's a successful candidate for Provincial Offenses Clerk, and we also do have a Nappany Secondary School student as a co-op, Rory Jackson, that's joining us for a couple hours every day, which has been a really great addition.
Excellent, thanks, Mr. Day. Any questions for Financial Services? Seeing none, we'll move to Social Services, and I'll welcome Ms. Chenier back to her place.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The only thing I'd like to highlight in this report is that Pelus, in partnership with AMHS KFLNA Mental Health Services, we submitted an application to Health Canada, Canada, and we're successful. So, the, the project is called Prevention Addiction and Treatment Hub, and the short form is called PATH. So, funding is available to reduce overdose risks and improve harm reduction accessibility for vulnerable individuals in the community. So, AMHS KFLNA will be deploying a mobile overdose prevention team to provide onsite naloxone distribution, harm reduction education, supplies and support services to homeless individuals and high-risk populations. So, that's a really big success for us and really providing a much-needed service to the community where there have been shortfalls. So, that is the only thing I'd like to highlight, and I'd be able to, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions for Ms. Chenier. Counselor Fritsch.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Lynn, a question on, on the PATH project? Is that actually a project with definitive timelines, or is it something that would be continued on in, you know, in future years?
Thank you for the question. At this point, the funding is for 2025. Of course, we'll always be looking out for additional funding and see if there's any extensions to the program, those kinds of things, and it is county-wide as well. So, they'll be going to all corners of the county.
Any other questions? Moving on, Community and Development Services.
Thank you. March break is a really busy time at our libraries and our museum, and staff do a wonderful job with different events and, and programs. I know at the museum alone, there were over 300 people that came through the doors for those activities, and the library numbers, we're still calculating, but I, I know for sure they're that, if not higher. So, a big thank you to all our staff who do that, and, you know, again, activating the museum and the libraries is, is so key and so important. They do a wonderful job with that, and March break was a, was a great example. On the planning side, so we're in the recruitment phase right now for Agricultural Lands Study Committee, as we had pretty good interest so far for the community. The deadline is March 27th for that, so if you know anyone who's interested, to have them please submit their application to us, and then we'll be coming forward with a report to council at the April meeting and with our first committee meeting taking place in May, so we're well on our way. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Paul? Seeing none, Long-Term Care.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I will just share that the RNAO Clinical Pathways is being kicked off on March 25th at 1:30 at the home. The clinical pathways are largely something that is done with frontline staff and with a great amount of input from them and residents and families. It's a really great initiative. The three that we're starting with is on admissions, resident and family-centered care, and then delirium. Warden Townend is coming to the kickoff, which is wonderful, and then we're also starting in April with the RNAO Best Practice Spotlight Organization. Both of these are three-year journeys and really are just about making sure that we are doing the very, very best care services, efficiency, delivery, the entire gamut. I've also attached advantages, budget, pre-budget submission, so that you can see that if you would like to. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Malcolm? Seeing none, Emergency Services.
Thank you, and through you, Warden. The report's in front of you. Happy to answer any questions. The one item I would draw to your attention is there's an image of our new medal. That's a little hard to see, so it says Lennox and Addington Paramedic Dedication and Service, and on the back is the County Code of Arms.
Any questions for the chief? Seeing none, Human Resources.
Thank you, Warden Townend. Just wanted to say, highlight the Lennox and Addington Career Fair that we attended on March 6th. It was a great success, very popular spot. Krista Payne from HR as well as Sarah Wilson, Kristen Van Ass, Megan Marshall, Cody Gorman and Elizabeth Rourke from the John and Parrott and Emergency Services attended, and I think that the combination of HR along with the support of the frontline staff, and that's who is there, really gives job seekers a realistic profile of what it's like to work at the county, so I appreciate their attendance and their engagement on that. Thank you.
Any questions for HR? Counselor Wise.
Comment? I really like the, the career discovery program. It, I think it's really good for an organization when people from different parts of the organization get to see what the experience of their colleagues in other departments is, is like. I just wanted to commend you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Wise. Okay, Infrastructure Services.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. Infrastructure Services Team would like to welcome returning students Mark Calery and Wes Setzstein, and congratulate Jacob Brown and Jack Murphy into the Property Services Department, and we'd also like to congratulate Leanne Chu. Leanne was the successful candidate for the GIS Analyst Program, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Any questions for Mr. Wagler? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to accept all the activity reports as presented. Counselor Hogg, seconded by Counselor Davison. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. So, we come to some resolutions around certain topics. Number one, steps to respond to US tariff threats on the steel sector. From Champlain Township, what are council's wishes? Deputy Warden.
Move to receive and support.
Motion to receive and support. Can I get a second or for that? Counselor Hogg, discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Number two, local procurement and trade negotiations, City of Kitchener. What are council's wishes? Deputy Warden again.
Move to receive only.
Motion to receive, seconded by Counselor Calver. Any discussion on that? Deputy Warden.
I'll just explain why I only receiving. I saw that it was mostly dealing with local direction, to local concerns, and not at the higher levels that would even make an impact.
Do they noted any further comment? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Sovereignty of Canada, rejection of attempts to undermine Canadian sovereignty, Town of Halton Hills. What are council's wishes? Counselor Hogg. Motion to receive and support. Can I get a second or for that? Counselor Fritsch, discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Tariffs on Canadian production, Town of La Salle. What are council's wishes? Deputy Warden.
Move to receive.
Motion to receive. Is there a second or for that motion? Counselor Wise, mover?
Same as the last one.
Call the question, then. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Standing for Canada, rejection of attempts to undermine Canadian sovereignty, Municipality of East Ferris. Council's wishes? Counselor Hogg. Motion to receive and support. Is there a second or? Counselor Wise, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Matters for information, EWC Letter to the Minister of Long-Term Care Regarding Bill 235, Support for Caregivers and Seniors Act. Deputy Warden.
Just make a motion to receive?
Yep. Can I get a second or? Counselor Wise, call the question. All those in favor? Motion is passed. Other business, statements by members. Any statements by members? I will just say that it was my pleasure yesterday as the warden to attend the swearing-in ceremony of our new member, well, our returning Member of Provincial Parliament, Rick Brzee, at Queens Park alongside my fellow council colleagues, Counselor Richardson and Counselor Calver and, and Deputy Warden Hegedorn. It was a nice day out, was good to see support from across the riding for Mr. Brzee and share our greetings with him and also our desire to continue to get some hard work done in collaboration with the province in the coming term. Any notices of motion? Any matters of urgency? In pursuant to Section 239.2 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, this part of the meeting will be closed to the public in order to adopt closed session minutes and to consider a matter regarding an identifiable individual. Can I get a motion to go into closed? Counselor Calver, seconded by Counselor Fritsch. All those in favor? Motion is carried. And we are back from closed session. I will give our rise and report during closed session. County Council approved minutes from the February 12th, 2025 closed session meeting and received information about an identifiable individual. Before us are some bylaws, tax ratios, a bylaw to set tax ratios and tax rate reductions for the County of Lennox and Addington and local municipal purposes for the taxation year 2025. Can I get a motion for that bylaw? Three readings. Counselor Fritsch, seconded by Deputy Warden. Any comment? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Tax rates, a bylaw to set and levy the rates of taxation for the county purposes for the taxation year 2025. Three readings. Counselor Hogg, seconded by Counselor Davison. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Confirmation of proceedings. Can I get a motion? Counselor Calver, seconded by Deputy Warden. All those in favor? Motion is carried. And a motion to adjourn. Counselor Wise, seconded by Counselor Hogg. All those in favor?